There you go, guys. Now we're recording. Um, so let's get to the business portion of what we're trying to do here.
That is because I don't have speakers.
I'd say, I'd say business, if everybody could, just make sure you're muted until, and if you need to say anything, just raise your hand and then we'll, we'll get right to you, okay? Um, so dues, uh, we need to get our dues paid. You could pay your dues either by a check to Rusty. At his address at two fifteen Chariot Lane, Simpsonville, South Carolina. Two nine six eight one, or you can Venmo Rusty. At S C dash lacrosse officials A S S N. So it's either to his address, mail it to him, his, his home address is on the, uh, Arbiter site as well, but then the Venmo account is at S C dash lacrosse officials. A S S N. Okay? So please make sure you send your South Carolina. Lacrosse Association dues any amount of fifty dollars to Rusty as soon as possible. The other, the other thing you can start doing is getting your South Carolina High School League registration done and completed. Uh, with that, you can also do your concussion course as well. That is all on the South Carolina High School League. Uh, Arbiter page. Um, there you go. Rusty put the, uh, the information up over there. Uh, the USA lacrosse dues are also going to be due. I believe those are fifty five dollars. So you need to go and pay your USA lacrosse dues. And get that taken care of out of the way as, as well. Uh, as Ryan has been putting up there in the chats, everything is on the website. S C L O A wildapricot.org. So that's where all the information can be found. Well, that being said, Ryan Bailey is a new board of directors member. Uh, Mark Harden has stepped down. Uh, he is also no longer going to be taking care of the assigning and Ryan Bailey will be taking care of the assigning for the Midlands. In the upstate Rusty's, uh, in the upstate Charlie Bond has stepped in to fill in the vacant. At large member position up there. So that is what is going on with the new board members. That being said, with board members, we are looking for anyone that the at large members are up for reelection on January twenty first, our annual rules meeting date. If you are interested in becoming an at large member. And every single member of the board that is currently an at large member is planning and has expressed their interest in rerunning again. If you are interested in becoming an at large member, please send your, your resume application to me. At magsnewj at AOL dot com. So that way we can then, uh, add you in. And then we'll all be able to vote on you after the board of directors meeting, after the, uh, The rules meeting on January twenty first, just like we did last year, we're gonna do it through like a survey monkey type thing. And let everyone vote and put it up there for twenty four hours after the, uh, the meeting is complete and then It just in case someone nominates somebody else or they nominate themselves at the time of the meeting. All right. Um, as I said earlier, there are new assigners. Uh, currently the, the assigners in the areas are going to be. Thomas Greg is going to be the, the initial signer and he's going to initially assign all the games out to everyone. That is something that is going to be seen by only the assigners. The signers are going to see what, see what game, what the reassigners are going to see what games everyone is assigned to. And make adjustments as needed to make things as equitable as possible. Um, and the reassigners in the south coast is Thomas Greg on taking care of the north coast. As I said, Ryan Bailey is taking care of the Midlands. And Mitch Peterson is taking care of the upstate. So all the, uh, all the signer areas are going to be covered by those gentlemen. Um, if you need to reach out to them, their information is up on the, up on our S C L O A dot org. Uh, website as well, and you can get that information there. Uh, I have been doing training along with Ryan Bailey, Rusty Star has been part of it and Charlie Bond has been part of doing the Training for new officials. Uh, it has been going pretty well on Zoom so far. So far we've covered rules one through three. And rule five, we are going to be cap, we're going to be covering, covering, uh, Ryan, Adam Rich is looking to get on. I don't know what's going on there, but whatever. Um, we're going to be covering rule four on Wednesday. Any member that is interested in joining the meeting and partaking, please just send Ryan a message and then you can partake. You can join the meeting. Uh, all of the meetings and the, and, and covering all the rules are being covered. And recorded. So that way, if anyone wants to refer to them later on, uh, feel free to go back and refer to them. We could send you Uh, to the link and have you be able to look them up and stuff like that. Uh, we are looking into other avenues of doing some in season training. Whether it continues with Zoom, whether it goes to a go to training. Um, and I've posed a question to USA lacrosse and to NFHS about utilizing their NFHS application. Uh, so that way we could then register and record. People that are doing the exams on the NFHS app. I'm trying, they're, they're trying to see if there's a way so that way every single association can have an individual. Who can go into the NFHS app and look up to see, hey, Charlie Bond, he's done, you know, Ten exams or Dan Kelly, he's done one exam or Ryan Bailey, he's done five exams. Just to kind of see who's done whatever needed, you know, you know, to, to keep up with your continuing education and learning. Um, what we're, we're planning on doing is some sort of a training as the season's going on. And keeping it up on the site or, or somewhere where you guys can, you don't need to be there on, at the time, but You're gonna have like three days or so to go and answer the questions and then have them get recorded. So that's something that's it, that's in the works right now. Um. There is still the, uh, and I don't know if Pat is on here, but I'll give him a second to speak about that at the end after I'm done. But we do still have, uh, South Carolina Lacrosse Official Association merchandise available. Pat can, uh, run you through the, uh, the website if, if he is on here. If not, I'm going to fill everybody in. On the twenty first of January, plus I'm gonna have a follow up meeting with all the, a, a follow up email to everybody with all this information. Okay? As I said, our meeting is on January twenty first. This meeting is going to be the last Zoom meeting that we are going to have effective. Uh, twenty twenty three, we are going back to The, uh, regular in person meetings. This in the, in twenty twenty four, twenty twenty three is going to be the last meeting. That we're going to have as a Zoom meeting, starting in twenty twenty four, we're going to be going back to, uh, the, um, To the meetings in person, just try to get a little bit more, um, Involvement, face to face interaction with everybody and quite possibly maybe we can also incorporate, uh, the, uh, the banquet style. Lunch brunch or whatever at the end, uh, uh, at the end of that, uh, that meeting on, uh, you know, next year. Uh, preseason, the preseason is going to be beginning. And what we, uh, need to do is start making sure that we're prepared, making sure that we had, that we've paid all of our dues, making sure that we've Joined all the associations and organizations that we need to join, taking our exams. I'm going to be sending you an email when the exams become available on the NF, NF H S sites. That way that can be taken. Uh, I'm going to make sure that everyone has a good preseason meeting. Uh, with everybody on the twenty first and I'm also going to add a few meetings before the season begins to, to kind of Give us a little bit of game management skill set, give us a little bit of, of focus on where we should be, uh, and, and try to put us all in the right, in the right mindset. Um, those meetings, uh, because things are so difficult for us to be able to go and observe people. And to watch people, uh, in, in seasons since our numbers are as low as they are. What you guys do on your own, what The effort that you put forth so that when we can notice it is what's going to help you get involved in the, in the postseason. So yes, we find out from the assigners. Yes, we find out from Other, other officials and the grapevine, et cetera. But, um, if Officials aren't doing some additional continuing education on their own and not taking the initiative. It doesn't send the right signal to us that lets us know that the people are ready to be moving up into the post game assignments, whether it be The first round or whether it be the finals. So, um, I'm not telling you, you have to do anything as far as, um, Uh, continuing education online and the programs that we're going to offer to everyone you, but Uh, it is something that is going to be used as far as Keeping track of everyone since we are all so thin in numbers and we are all spread out through, through the entire state. Um, another thing that has been discussed briefly, um, but what we're going to do is On Survey Monkey as well, we're going to put up a vote for everybody. Okay? This is, this is a, this is a knee kicking the tires kind of thing to all of you. Um, discussing, discussing about moving to a two inch stripe shirt. And moving away from the one inch striped shirt. What I'm going to do is put out an email, a, a message to everybody in Survey Monkey. Are you interested? Are you not interested? Does it matter? Just kind of something simple like that and see what everybody else says, see what everybody else feels. If for some reason everyone or, or the majority of people are interested in moving into the two inch stripe. Then what we'll do is we're going to give a two year grace period to be able to move into the two, the two inch stripe. Not jump right into it right away, but allow everybody some time to build up and Be able to, to find and get the jerseys that we're looking for. That being said, um, In this process, after the vote. If it gets, if, if we're gonna end up moving into that two inch stripe. And the two officials work in the game, if they already have the two inch stripe and they want to wear it, fine. So long you're wearing the same thing. That doesn't, it does, it's not going to matter. But if one official has one inch and one official has two inch, then we're going to go with the one inch. All right, the, 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 the furback to the one inch. All right, it's not Got each guy is wearing different. So that's going to require the referee to have some communication with his partners. His partners that have some communication with the referee. Prior to the game beginning, maybe twenty four hours before, maybe forty eight hours before. Either way, just so that way you communicate with each other and let each other know. And this is all dependent on which way the vote goes. This isn't happening now. This is something that's going to happen after the vote, what, whatever. This is not a decision that I'm making without having your input. You guys input, this is your chapter. I ask the questions and just organize it with Clearly with a lot of help from Ryan and, and the other board members. And then we just move on, move on from there. All right? Um, so let's stick with the, uh, the new gear. Every year, we all have some ratty stuff, all right? We all have some, some need to get new hats, maybe a new jersey. Maybe a new whistle, maybe new cleats. Look at your stuff. It's early enough right now. Take a look at your stuff and tell your wife, this is what you need. Tell your significant other, this is what you need. Buy yourself a Christmas gift and get yourself some new, new lacrosse gear, flags or whatever. Just let's, let's make sure that we hit, hit, hit the ground running, nice, clean, neat, sharp. Let's make sure that we are, are all together. Um, as far as uniforms are concerned, until USA lacrosse Prints out and distributes, um, The, uh, USA lacrosse patch. We are still going to be wearing the US lacrosse patch. Okay? Until I hear something different from USA lacrosse, we are still wearing the US lacrosse patch. And, and that's what's going to be on, on our, on our sleeves. All right? Um, I have already discussed voting and the at large members. As I said, if you're interested in being an at large member. Please send me an email along with your resume. So that way we can add you to the list. Of at large members, both of the at large members, uh, Kirk Rogers and Charlie Bond are going to be rerunning for those positions. Uh, schedules, we touched briefly on the schedules on how the newest signers are going to be handling schedules and stuff like that. Um, what I would like to speak about is the schedules that are getting in and put in right now by the teams, by the assigners, they're all being done right now. What our job as officials is to do is to get on the computer, get on Arbiter right now, because that's the assigning system that we use. And start doing all of your blocks. Start blocking out for that birthday party that you know of, that wedding you know of, that other game you want to go see. Whatever it happens to be, but start putting your blocks in now so that way we don't have give backs. That way we don't have turnbacks. From officials back to the assigners. What we're going to do is have, inform all the assigners that when you put a game out and publish it out to an individual, to an official. That official has three days maximum to accept that game. If that official does not accept those games in three days, then those games will be removed from his schedule and we will just move on to the next person. We are all adults here. We are all able to be responsible to manage and maintain our schedule. This is a way of communicating with the assigners, your availability. We all know that there are times and emergencies, and when I say emergency, I'm, I mean, an emergency. An emergency is not a birthday party that you happen to forget about. Okay? Take responsibility for your own schedule. Take responsibility for yourself and the games that you work. You, you do that by providing access and proper access and availability on your arbiter schedule. So I'm letting you guys know to start getting on your arbiter schedule right now. And start putting your blocks in so that way when we start doing the assigning. You're all as up to date as you could possibly be as opposed to all of a sudden Calling up Ryan and saying, hey, Ryan, I forgot I should have blocked this out. I should have blocked that out. Um, the, uh, the Tone of that does not usually taste very well to a lot of the assigners being able to Have to reassign and keep on reassigning games. Because officials have not properly maintained their schedule. That is your job. That is your responsibility, not the assigner's responsibility, gentlemen. Uh, and the last thing that I'm going to have is gear for new officials. I've had a couple, a couple of officials That have mentioned to me, uh, officials like Bob Childs that have said that they have a bunch of, uh, Gear that they're looking to pass off, pawn off and stuff like that. Uh, so if, uh, anyone is interested in any, any new gear, if anyone has any new gear, all right? We'll, uh, we'll try to distribute that around throughout the entire chapter. So that way, if anyone does have anything That they're looking to either sell, gift, give, whatever. Um, we're going to put everybody in contact with everybody right now. I know Bob Child has some triple and, and quadruple lacrosse shirts. Uh, size large. Um, he, he has, uh, some hats, some extra whistles if anybody wants them. Um, and, uh, if, if there are some, anything that you're interested in, I can help put you in contact with Bob Childs. So that way maybe you guys can speak a little more about that. And, uh, maybe we'll start thinking about putting kind of a, a little, uh, online auction marketplace on our website to, to have people Have the ability to post up, this is what they have and what they're looking for kind of thing. Just finding more ways to be able to communicate with everybody since we are as spread out as we, as we are. Um, so that being said, uh, let me quickly cruise through the chat. Ryan's got that, uh, Although, so as far as the two inch stripe, there are a lot of states that are using the two inch stripe. Um, and we are just kind of where we are right now, just because There are other pressing matters as far as, uh, the board has previously been concerned with. With trying to get us up to date with our training, trying to get us up to date and communications with each other. So now that we are up to date and we're where we are, um, Moving to, moving in the direction with the jerseys, the same way that many of the other organizations are Is, is the direction that we may or may not go in. That's all up to you guys. It's not up to me. If you guys don't want it, okay, fine. I could care less. I It's what it is, you know, it's no big deal. Um, so next what I want to do is I want to open the floor up to whatever board of directors members that there are on here, including the assigners. So, uh, let's see, is, uh, is Pat, are you on? I don't think Pat's on. Uh, Tom, you're on. Go ahead, Tom. If you have anything to say, just unmute yourself, Tom.
Uh, no, I think you covered everything. I'm fine.
All right. Uh, Rusty, do you have anything?
Hey guys, pay your dues. Time for dues, man. Venmo or you can mail them to me, whatever.
All right. Uh, Ryan, do you have anything?
Uh, yeah, I was gonna ask, um, About the late policy, if we wanted to touch on that as far as like, let's say a school comes from the upstate down to the Midlands. And then the classic excuse, the, oh, traffic got in the way. And then they have a five thirty, seven thirty split. Is there anything different we want to do to try to combat that?
Unfortunately, those situations are difficult to manage. Those are, are, uh, unexpected situations and, and more often than not, some of them can probably be avoided. If there was better management of the busing by the schools and by the school administration. Um, the only thing that I can tell you for sure Is that the varsity game starts on time. The varsity game will, if, if they have, if they have a five thirty, seven thirty double header and the JV's being played first. And they show up and they're late. The JV game gets shortened if played at all, according to whatever time it is that they show up, but the varsity game. According to Charlie Wensky and the South Carolina High School League, the varsity game is scheduled to start at Seven thirty, let's say in this example, it starts at seven thirty.
I mean, that's what we've done in the past. I just didn't know if anything.
Yeah, no, there, there isn't, there isn't a, 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 um, there's not a, hey, you know, we've sat around here for thirty minutes and they're still not here kind of thing. So you're going to get an, an extra vig. There, there is nothing That the high school league has in place. I, I think, I, I don't even think, um, um, Rusty, they don't have it, even have anything like that for, for football. I don't even think they have anything like that for baseball or any of the other sports. Unless someone else here can correct me.
I don't know of anything like that For football.
Okay.
Steve, I want a bigger, go, I'm sorry.
No, no, go, go.
Wanted, and I talked to this with Ryan on the same subject. What I've gotten and I'm wondering what our communication Um, platform is between head coaches, ADs Ourselves and the assigned officials because I've had them show up and say, no, the game starts at seven thirty. We said, no. We have it right here in Arbor starts at seven.
Okay, so here's the easy answer there. You are the referee. It, it, it's your job to call and contact the school and confirm the start time of the game. It's your job to call and contact whoever it is with the home school to find out the time and location of the game. Because sometimes they change it and do not let the officials know. So the onus is on you. This is, this is where we put our big boy pants on and we go out on, on And we call up the school, we send an email to the school, have something down that, hey, I called you up and I spoke to you and you told me that the game is at this time. So my suggestion to each and every single one of you is to, you don't want to sit around there longer than you need to, make that call. Call up the school, find out and confirm that the, that the game time and the game location are exactly as it is in the arbiter. There are more times that they don't give us that information and the assigners that information and mistakes happen. And they do not think that it's that big of a deal because pretty much It's been that way and it's, it's a, uh, A haphazard sport that doesn't get managed or maintained As effectively as baseball, football and basketball in the state of South Carolina.
I agree there. It's not, it's not the home team. It's normally the visiting team. That shows up late and saying, no, I haven't assigned, you know, it said seven thirty. So I mean, even if we're reaching out to the home A D and even the coach, but it's always normally the A D. And you're confirming this?
If you want, when you, when you send that email, if you want to send the email out to both athletic directors, go right ahead. Go right ahead. There's nothing wrong with doing that. If you want to ask the visiting A D, hey, coach, I just want to make sure you guys are all good with your busing and stuff like that. You know, the, there is probably more, more pregame things that we can and probably should be doing to make sure that we maintain That line of communication with the athletic directors and the schools. So that way we know that Our game is going to be starting at a, at a certain time. So, so I know, I know it's, it's a really cruddy thing that, um, things happen like that and the way they, they go like that. Um, but
The A D's on the arbiter are, I, I mean, the lack, the point of communication is that two dispersion systems or are they, are we all reading?
They have the exact same system. They have a, so, so more, here's what's going to happen. All right. One athletic director, one coach is going to say, oh, our arbiter system has it at this. And another coach is going to say, oh, our arbiter system has it at that. Sorry. Um, but that's a bunch of crap because quite frankly, it's the same arbiter system. It's in one way. There is no other way that it's in. It's not It, it, it's not on two, two different systems. And what they're probably referring to is probably some old printed up schedule sheet that they have. Uh, from the beginning of the season that has since changed.
Uh, real quick, can we make sure we send that out to, um, out of state officials that are put on ours for in state games? I ran into an issue last year from a Georgia official that did not want to do that and gave the home team time to warm up. So I got to sit there for an extra twenty minutes while the team got to warm up.
All right, well, all the, the, when it comes to varsity games, all right, they're, they're, they are allowed from, from when they, they get access to the field. They're allowed to warm up for twenty minutes.
I understand, but this was a JV game that the, the R did not want to cut short to give the, the JV their time. Because the varsity game just got mis-scheduled. So it was, uh, a six or six thirty to seven thirty, you know, start time. And I told him we had to start the game on time. He overruled me. So we started twenty minutes later.
Um. All right. So my guide for such, for, for this specific situation Uh, would be if you have something that you're unsure about. Okay? First of all, support your partner. Okay? You might have to take one on the chin there or something like that. All right. But the best thing to do is to make sure that you don't become, or there does not become a confrontational situation. And then you contact your signer. And then let the signer know what happened and then let the signer handle whatever needs to get handled after that. So if it means that you've got to take one on the chin. Then you got to take one on the chin. But then you notify and communicate to your signer that this is something that needs to be addressed. And the signer will then address it with the individual that made whatever potential decision was made. Does that answer your question?
Uh, as Beth is going to get, um, resolved. So, yeah.
Okay. Uh, I'm just going to continue right here with the, uh, with the board members. Charlie, do you have anything?
Yeah, I've been in touch with, uh, USA lacrosse about, uh, getting some grants for us for continuing education, things like that. So if anybody have any questions or suggestions about, uh, things we need to cover or anything as, as far as that goes. I'd love to have a conversation with you and, and see what we can do. That's it.
All right, Kirk, do you have anything?
I don't have anything. I'm good.
All right. So, um, Uh, let's just go over some of these questions here. Let's, uh, let's start opening up. What I want you guys to do, just raise your hand. Uh, so that way I could see who it is and then we'll, we'll start trying to And open the floor up to anybody who has any questions and stuff like that. Chris, go ahead, Chris. Chris Klinker, go ahead.
Yeah, um, obviously we've all seen the Issues that we've all been having with coaches, with parents. What is the leagues? What is our stance on zero tolerance?
Uh, okay. So you're asking about swearing, you're asking about, uh, interactions with parents, interactions with coaches, interacting with players.
Yeah, that, so no, I, no, not, not with players. Listen, we, we control it on the field, right? When we get, what is, what is the, you know, are we putting out a statement saying? You know, there's zero You know, there's zero tolerance there, and, and my apologies, I'm new to the, the uh, the organization right now. But like, what is the, what's the policy, I mean, are we putting out, you know, there'd be, you know, code of conduct, et cetera, et cetera. You know, because, listen, you know, we all don't wanna, want that stupid ass parent up in the, you know, just screaming and yelling. You know, what are we gonna do about it? What authority do we have, how do we control those situations to keep peace on the field?
Okay, uh, I understand what you're getting at now, um, I understand also that some teams, possibly and potentially all teams. Have the teams' players, parents ma- may, maybe even signing these code of conduct things and stuff like that. And as we all know, those aren't worth the paper that they're written on, alright, um. So that being said, what we try to do is we try to manage the game to the best of our abilities. With the individuals that are involved in the game. If for some reason that the individuals that are involved in the game are, are being distracted by individuals who are not involved in the game. There is supposed to be a field manager and or slash site manager that is going to be there. By all means, if you feel that there is something that needs to be addressed, call an official's timeout. Send the players over to the, to their benches, bring the coaches into the center, call down the site manager. And delay the game until that situation that to the, can be resolved to, to the best. To where you feel satisfactory that you can continue to conduct a, a safe game. I understand that people are going to be critical. I understand that there's going to be a lot of chatter that's gonna be going on through whatever stupid ass forums there are. But, the safety of the players, the safety of the officials is paramount. And if we put the onus back on the schools, as is written in their guidebooks. They need to take that responsibility, they need to be the ones that step up and handle making sure. That the officials are safe getting to the field, the officials are safe getting from the field. The officials are safe while the game is being conducted, and the officials are, are, and the players are safe while the game is being conducted. They are there to participate and help, so is the head coach of the home team, and that is written in the rulebook. So if you have these issues, please use what's written in the rulebook to your advantage. And have the coach help administer the proper conduction of the game. There is nothing wrong with stopping the game, moving the players over, because everyone is gonna be, what's going on? And they're all gonna know and they're all gonna hear that one parent, that, or that one kid or whatever, that's been doing whatever it is that he was doing. So egregiously that you felt that you needed to delay the game, just so that way you can resolve that issue. The people in the stands will shut him down, or the staff members there at the school will shut him down. Or the head coach of the home team will shut him down. It is not our job at all to interact with the fans in any way, shape or form. Maintain your composure, be and act like a, a professional. And use the rules to your advantage, use your professionalism to your advantage. Use the way that you've been trained over the years to manage and maintain those situations to your advantage. This is gonna be a subject that later on in January, we're gonna have guest speaker come in and speak a little bit more about. Does that answer your question?
Great question, yeah, no, no, absolutely, great response, um, you know, I think at the end of the day, we just gotta be consistent. With that, listen, you know what, the heckler, we're, we're, we're gonna listen to the heckler, we're always gonna have the heckler. You know, let's not, let's not go overboard with that, but you know, if there's, you know, that one asshole. That just cannot shut his mouth because he's entitled to it. Let's be consistent with taking that, those kinda actions, because it helps the next guy at the next game.
Absolutely, well said. John Bailey?
Yeah, I want, hang on, yeah, I wanted to follow up just on that, on this subject you talked about. Are the ADs, because at every football game, every basketball game, most games, their AD or police officer or rental. Security is there on the, on the. Far side, on the, on that side of the field, and when ninety nine, ninety-five percent of people, if they're there to see their son play. Or their friends of, or their students enjoying themselves, they shouldn't be punished for that five percent or whatever is causing problems. We don't have time, nor is it proper for us to be looking in the stands trying to figure out who the person is saying things. That a player can't say, we can't say, and a coach can't say, you know, using the terminology. But are the ADs, I mean, I've had, I've had to write the school and say, next game, I expect an AD or somebody up on that side of the stands. So we don't have to deal with this anymore, because once they start.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I mean, I'm saying, are we setting the proper expectation, are we gonna write a letter out to the schools about the black guy, about the. You know, monitoring the stands before the season starts, so they know they're responsible for that, reiterate that, Steve, because. We shouldn't have to, like you said, we shouldn't have to deal with anybody in the stands.
It, it does get reiterated each and every single year in the meeting with the assigners and with the, and, and with the high school league and the. And, 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 you know, there, there's that assigners meeting that happens every single year, and this is a topic that's brought up every single year. And, and so i- i- it's not something that isn't, isn't known and, and discussed about. Um, whether or not they fulfill their obligations is, i- i- is what's in question. Which is why I'm suggesting and really insisting that you guys stop the play and send the players over to the sidelines. Because now, what's gonna happen to the person that is managing the game and managing their field? What's happened, what's going on, why are we not playing, you know, I, I wanna go home, that guy wants to go home, alright? Make no, no ifs, ands or buts about it, that person that's a site manager, they wanna, they wanna go home. So if we're not playing, that means the clock's not moving, that means that they're not going home, but we're putting the onus on them. And we're not doing it, we're not playing the game because of the situation that they created, so throw it back at them. Throw it back at them and let them be the ones that remedy that situation, not us. And any messages that you wanna send to the school, you should send it to the, to your assigners. And then let the assigners take care of that, take, take care of those situations.
I think we can, well, I think, you know, again, as, as the R, I'm always, alright, who's the AD? Let me meet him, bring him down here, I wanna see the AD, and I asked for the AD before the game, okay? Meet him, shake his hand, say, where are you gonna be, you got a lightning detector, et cetera, et cetera. Um, you know, where are you gonna be, well, I'm gonna be between the, the uh, you know, the, the baseball game in here, okay? Alright, thank you, appreciate it, look forward to uh, a great game, and then just.
Nice, I mean, that's a nice plan, but a lot of times at lacrosse games are not ADs there, you know, it's. It, you know, you, it's.
Okay, okay, listen, listen, they are required to have someone there, and sometimes that someone there is the head coach of the home team.
Right.
Okay, so, let, you know, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. Those, the, the, the people, the people are there that we need, whether it be the AD, whether it be the assistant AD, whether it be a teacher. Whether it be the head coach, someone's there, alright? Use that someone to our advantage, they are part of our team in those situations. The, the game has, i- is, is secondary to whatever it is that you feel is so obstructive to the game. That needs to be, needs to be resolved.
Steve, you answered my, you answered my question, the fact that they're made aware of this. Aware, because I didn't know we sent something out in the beginning of the season, it says, this is your, you know, as a home team, you're responsible for this.
Right.
Okay, that's all I needed to ask.
Alright, Mike Reardon, go ahead, unmute yourself, Mike.
Yeah, hey Steve, how you doing?
Alright.
Hey, um, so last year, we were talking about uh, going to, trying to go to like, every game being a three man game. Well, given the scarcity of refs that we have, I mean, is that plan still in effect, and if it is. You know, we did a couple three man games last year, um, and everybody seemed to do it differently. So, is, what's the status of that, and if it is going forward, um, do we have like a standardized? Method of doing this, because the rulebook said one thing and we did it totally different when we were doing it, because we weren't really that familiar with it. As new, as a new ref, I certainly was not.
Right, um, we are still trying to move all games uh, as quickly as possible into three man games. Sometimes we, we have enough officials available to do that, and sometime, and sometimes we don't. So, uh, yes, we are trying to move everything into a, a, a three man game. As far as the way that the uh, rotations, and as far as the way that the game is, is uh, managed and, and the mechanics of it and stuff like that. We're following the USA Lacrosse Three Man Mechanics Guidebook, um, that's up on their website. And that's, that's the way that we're handling it, sometimes when there are officials that are college experienced. Or there may be an official that might be a little bit uh, struggling because of an injury or something like that. Then we might make adjust, adjustments that are outside the realm of the normal USA Lacrosse uh, mechanics for three man. But that's because there's a special circumstance that's being, being monitored and managed in that, in that particular instance. Um, but for the most part, if we're doing the three man mechanics, we're gonna be utilizing the USA Lacrosse. Three Man Mechanics Guidebook. Okay, good. Anyone else on here have any other questions? I'm looking through for hands, if anybody wants to raise their hand. And. Okay, does anybody else have anything else that they'd like to say, any uh, points? Is there anything that, that you feel that I'm missing in the chat room here that you guys are putting up there or anything like that? Just speak up. Alright guys, um, I'm trying to, to keep you guys abreast of all the things that we're working on and all the things we're doing and stuff like that. Um, if you feel that you've missed something today, the, this meeting has been recorded. Uh, I wanna thank all you guys for participating and coming on board today, and, oh, hang on, Matt Isles, go ahead, Matt, go ahead.
Has there been any news from the high school league about us meeting with the coaches preseason for that rules meeting that we used to do?
Uh, that, I believe, and I'll, I'll defer to Tom on that. I, I believe that is a thing of the past, and, and that is not happening any, any longer to the best of my knowledge. Thomas Gregg, could you be able to, to verify that for me?
Uh, you, you are correct, uh, it's my understanding that they are not, um, they don't need us to attend that meeting anymore. And that's just something between the uh, between the coaches and the, and the high school league.
Alright, uh, anyone else? Just raise your hand, so that way you come up on, on that first page there, go once. Going twice, guys, thank you very much for participating, I appreciate it very much. This is being recorded, the information will be up there for everybody on our South Carolina website, scloa.org. Have a very great holiday season, enjoy, start getting in the gym, fellas, start running, training, getting physically fit and ready for the season. Thanks very much, guys, have a great, have a great season, bye. Thank you, Ryan, you're doing a great job, fantastic, fantastic job, Ryan, I'm loving what you're doing.
Yeah, I appreciate it, my man.
Um, um. Thanks, Steve, Clinker here, uh, yeah, we just, I, I, we just need to get consistent with this, you know. I mean, obviously, it's a problem all across everywhere, um, if we can just get consistent with this shit. And, you know what, I mean, just, there's gotta be repercussions, it's just, you know, for some of these schools. To, 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 uh, um, you know, I know, coming from Georgia, it's, we're, we're getting there, but. It, it, you know, just, these, these idiots gotta stop, you know, and the schools have got a friggin', you know, tell them, alright. We're gonna get, we're gonna get fined, we're gonna get something out of it, you know, so, but good, great response, I appreciate it, and uh.
What's up, Rob?
They, they fine, they fine coaches for stuff like that.
Where, in, in South Carolina, or?
Yeah, it, I was, I, I, I have to say, I couldn't make it to the meeting, so like, four or five years back, I ended up going to one of the coaches meetings instead. And I sat in, and I, I remember, like, the athletic director, if you throw a coach out, the, the coach gets fined a couple hundred dollars. The school gets fined a certain amount of money, if you throw an assistant out, then I think that he's not allowed to coach for the rest of the year. I mean, there's some repercussions if, if we take action against coaches.
Yeah, I don't, and listen, I don't think we all want it to be a. We gotta be careful, they, they, we all know there's, that guy that, that's gonna blow up at the coach, and I've done it myself. Um, but, you know, we just wanted, to your point that you made very, very eloquently, it was, you know what, we just wanna be safe, right? I don't need this asshole, you know, telling me every, every little, uh, you know, push I missed, I missed, so.
Chris, you're, you're, uh, the meat of your conversation and, and your question revolved around spectators. It didn't really revolve around the coaches and players, uh, so, you know, that's why, um, you know, that rule. For the coaches finding and stuff like that, suspension assistant coach, doesn't really apply to what your question originally was. That's why I wanted to answer the question in a way that you're, you're throwing. The, the responsibility back on who the responsibility should originally be on in the first place.
No, and that's why I always ask, alright, who's the AD, who's in charge here? You know what, that's the person I wanna, you know, I wanna see, um, and make sure he's, you know, make sure he's, he's on site, you know. And whoever it is, I don't, you know, if he tells me it's the lady in the corner, right, okay, perfect, you know what? I, but I'm gonna turn to her if I got a problem, you know, so, but yeah, no, it, it's just, I, I, I think we're all sick and tired of it. And we're, you know, we all wanna kinda move it in the right direction, and it's just baby steps, right?
Right.
Alright, appreciate it, guys, have a great night, and uh, great meeting, thanks, Steve.
Alright, guys, thanks, Steve, take it easy, bye, I gotta get back to overtime range game, see yous.